Good evening. Today is Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. This is the reorganizational meeting of the Board of Education. May I have a motion to open the meeting? Peter? Scott? The Board will now convene to executive session. May I have a motion to convene executive session?
Do you need an all in favor on opening the meeting?
Okay. Motion to convene executive session? Peter, Allison, all in favor? Thank you, and we will return after executive session. Good evening. We are resuming the meeting of the Board of Education. This is the reorganizational meeting. We have closed executive session, and we will resume. Would everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're now going to proceed with the oath of office for our newly elected trustees. Start with you, Mr. Campana. Please repeat after me. I, Louis Campana,
I, Louis Campana,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
to support the Constitution of the United States,
to support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and will faithfully discharge the duties,
of trustee for the Board of Education,
of trustee for the Board of Education,
of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District,
of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District,
Town of Eastchester,
Town of Eastchester,
County of Westchester,
County of Westchester,
State of New York,
State of New York,
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
And Mr. Abrams?
I'm ready.
Okay. I'm going to administer the oath of office for your trustee position. Please repeat after me. I, Joel Abrams,
I, Joel Abrams,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
to support the Constitution of the United States,
to support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
that I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of trustee,
the duties of trustee,
for the Board of Education,
for the Board of Education,
of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District,
of the Tuckahoe Free Union School District,
Town of Eastchester,
Town of Eastchester,
County of Westchester,
County of Westchester,
State of New York,
State of New York,
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move on to the nomination and election of a board president. May I have, excuse me, I'm sorry. May I first ask the Board for a nominee of the position of president?
I'd like to nominate Allison Halloran.
All in favor? Congratulations, Allison. I would now like to call a motion to nominate a board vice president.
Scott Bogetti.
Scott Bogetti. Any second?
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations, Mr. Bogetti.
Thank you.
I will now turn the meeting over to the Halloran to continue the meeting.
Allison, come sit over here.
Come sit.
So, Robin, do I need to do these oaths for president? I'm supposed to do that after? How about for you, for district clerk? Yeah, that has to be submitted. Bear with me a little bit. Okay. So, resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, appoints Robin Dunn to the position of district clerk for the 2025-2026 school year at a stipend of $13,745. Can I have a motion? Pete, second? Scott? All in favor? Robin?
Yes.
Repeat after me. I, Robin Dunn,
I, Robin Dunn,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
to support the Constitution of the United States,
to support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk
for the Board of Education,
for the Board of Education,
of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District,
of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District,
Town of Eastchester, County of Westchester, State of New York,
Town of Eastchester, County of Westchester, State of New York,
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're going to start with comments by the Board. Why don't we go down the line? You always did this to me.
This is an odd view for me, but I like it. I don't mind the view from here. It's not too bad. Well, just really excited about starting off a new school year. We have a new team up here. Excited about that. I think one thing that's being a little bit lost in the shuffle that's really, really important is we have a brand-new superintendent sitting right here. His first day today. And I know I'm super excited about his arrival and about the direction he's going to take us in. So very, very happy about that. And welcome to our new board members. Welcome, Joel. Welcome, Louis. And welcome to our new officers. So yeah, great start to a new year. I'm excited. Thank you.
Yes, and I thank you all. And welcome, Ben, your first day. Congratulations, Allison. Scott? I'm looking forward to this school year. I'm excited. It's a brand-new year. It's a brand-new, you know, somewhat new board. I must thank Pete, you know, and Allison for the pass. And Scott and our past two trustees that left, Laura and Teraz. They were, you know, I didn't have the opportunity to speak, but I'm just very proud of what they've done over their tenure with the school district. And I'm looking forward to, you know, a good school year. And, you know, best of luck to everybody.
I'll go, yeah. Sure. Hello, everybody. Everybody's having a great summer so far. Congratulations to all the graduates. Pre-K, Allison, I took the kindergarten graduation with faith. The cutest graduation I've ever seen. It was great to be at. Eighth grade, sorry, middle school, eighth grade. And high school, congratulations. I want to thank, I didn't get a chance to go live, and thank Teraz and Laura Banky for their service on the Board for many years. It was great working with them. I learned a lot from both of them. And I want to truly say thank you to both of them for their time of service. Thank you to Pete Cassin for the president of this Board for the last five years. Learned a lot by working with Pete. And congratulations to Allison, of course. And welcome, Joel and Lou. And most importantly, I want to welcome Mr. Roberts here. He had a very successful tenure here at Tuckahoe for a new beginning. We're excited to have him. Just on that front, Mr. Roberts has been involved in the principal search, which is fully underway right now. Hopefully, somewhat final steps. We will keep you posted, or Mr. Roberts will keep you posted on that. Also, director of curriculum. We're going, Mr. Roberts is going through that with another committee. So we're excited to kick off the new year in a couple of months with great new beginnings, as I said. So we're excited. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Just to say thank you to the entire community and thank you to the previous Board. I'm looking forward to building on what was done over the past several years. I think we're going to have a great opportunity to do that. I want to congratulate Allison Halloran on board president and Scott Bogetti on vice president. Looking forward to working with each and every one of you. And Mr. Roberts, looking forward to working with you. And I believe we're going to have a good time here on this Board. Do some wonderful things for the Department. Thank you.
Okay. I would just like to welcome Joel and Louis to the table. It's going to be a great year, and I'm really looking forward to working with both of you. Welcome also, Mr. Roberts. I'm very excited for this year and to see everything that we can accomplish together. Thank you to Laura and Teraz and Dr. Goodman for your years of service to the community. Congratulations to all of our graduates. Oh, am I not on? Oh, I have to go closer.
Closer.
Yeah. Okay. So just start over. Thank you, Joel and Louis, and thank you, Mr. Roberts. And thank you to Laura and Teraz and Dr. Goodman for all of your service to the community. Congratulations to all of our graduates. And may your next part of your journey be a success. I also would like to thank Mrs. Pinto and Mrs. Nicoletos for all of the effort and hard work that they put into all of the graduation and end-of-the-year events. It's, you know, there's so much that they do. The awards night, the academic awards nights, the senior scholarships awards, and all the work that leads up to that. The athletic awards, the graduation ceremonies, especially this year, having to last-minute switch the high school to indoors because of the heat. I mean, they did it seamlessly. They put an enormous amount of effort into it. I know sometimes as a clerical worker, you're often overlooked. And you are not overlooked by me. I really appreciate all of the work that you guys put into it, as well as our business office staff, who's always busy making sure that everything is paid for and all those scholarship chunks are put. And I'm just really thankful to the Board for nominating me to be president. I'm excited about it. Thank you, Pete. We have road shoes to fill. I might often forget how things are going to go, and maybe you need you to step in. And that's it. I'm really excited about this year and a new beginning. Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations to you and our vice president. It's an honor and privilege to be here at Tuckahoe. It seems like many months ago, which it was in April when it was initially appointed. And I want to extend my appreciation to the Board for that appointment and that trust as your superintendent of schools. And these past few months, getting to know several stakeholder groups and the great community that exists here has truly been a blessing. Today was my first official day here at Tuckahoe, and we're underway with some interviewing and getting to know some candidates for some important positions I'll get into a little bit. But just I wanted to congratulate also Laura Banky and Teraz Gardier as the outgoing trustees. Did an excellent job at service to the Board for many years. So thank you for your leadership and dedication. And to our incoming trustees, Mr. Abrams and Mr. Campani, it's a pleasure to be on the Board, to work with you. And I look forward to providing the vision for the district in the upcoming months, working with the Board on our strategic plan and many other goals and initiatives. That's it. So a little update about just some of the work that I've been a part of the last few weeks. Been able to come to the district quite a bit, working with the administrative team, all different stakeholders. We've got some important leadership positions that we're working on and are very excited about. We've got stakeholder committees that we've been going through for the principal position and in addition for the director of curriculum instruction and technology. Prior to that, I was fortunate enough to be a part of the interview process. And the Board appointed last week, she's here tonight, the Director of Special Education, Mrs. Zett Deutsch. So congratulations and welcome on your first day as well. So very pleased to have you here. A little bit, July 1st is always a significant day in the school world. It signifies the closing of a successful 24-25 school year. Our graduates were just honored a few days ago, last week. And now we're starting to turn the page for this upcoming school year, which is very exciting. It's also a lot of work. So kudos to the business office. I know they're doing a lot of closeouts and finalizing purchase orders for the previous year and getting ready for us this year. And it's a great time for the administrative team to start to move forward and start the planning for next year, whether it's hiring teachers, other support staff, so that everybody comes back in September and the entire district is ready to receive our students and families with great success. So I look forward to that journey with all of them. And congratulations to our graduating seniors here at Tuckahoe. I had the privilege of attending the event. It was actually very memorable. I know the weather didn't cooperate for the traditional outside ceremony, but the indoor one was just as beautiful. And kudos to the organizers, the advisors, and the families to enjoy the students there. It was really a unique, very quaint and intimate setting. And I think it's something that I will remember seeing it for the first time and being a part of it next year will be very memorable as well for that. So a little more information on our hiring procedures. Some of the, for the principal position, we started with 94 applicants. We've screened resumes. We're moving forward with those. We've gone through that first group, and we brought in 20 additional candidates for more in-depth Zoom interviews with all very stakeholders a part of that team. So our team's really looking at bringing forth the best leaders to recommend to the Board of Education to select. We had a committee that met earlier this week, and we narrowed down the field even more. I'm going to be meeting and checking references with further candidates, as well as some other administrators. And then hopefully, we'll have a date in the very near future that the Board can see the finalists and make some final decisions. And then soon after, the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology to get those in place. And then we'll complete our team for administrators and begin further planning for the upcoming school year. So a lot of great things going on. I look forward to continuing to work with all the stakeholders. I've got some upcoming meetings with the PTA parent council representative, and looking forward to that. And I'm just really getting to be a part of the community. So it's a privilege to be here. I'm very excited, and thank you all for the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay. And now we have the first recognition of the audience for agenda items.
Allison, you have comments by the business official.
Oh, sorry. How could I forget you? Sorry. Comments by the business official.
Just getting your legs on you.
Good evening. Now that the school year has officially ended, I'd like to share some information on the capital improvement work that was funded through the 2023 bond referendum and is now underway. At the middle high school, work began yesterday. This project includes an abatement in the tunnel area below the building that will then allow us to replace steam pipes and domestic water pipes. And they actually already started replacing steam traps throughout the building. There's also masonry repairs going on on the facade of the building, and they will be moving soon to the fieldside wall of the building for masonry on that side as well. And a roof replacement on the original T-shaped roof, the center of the building, which is shaped like a T for Tuckahoe. If you look at an aerial view, that part of the roof is going to be replaced along with masonry around the roof. So they've already started removing some stone there. A bell clock and PA system replacement at the high school. A new state-of-the-art bell clock and PA system will be going in. At Cottle, most of the security camera work has already been completed. They will be replacing about 30 doors in this building, and there will be some minor classroom renovations going on as well. The infrastructure upgrades are a major step forward in modernizing our buildings. And we're so grateful to the community for the continued support of our facilities. I'd like to take a moment to also recognize and appreciate our custodians and cleaners. Their hard work behind the scenes, especially during these summer months, is essential. As the construction teams come out, they work tirelessly around them to clean and organize and get these buildings ready for the start of school in September. Just the way they turn around in such a short period of time is remarkable. And we are very thankful for them for all that they do. I'd like to recognize the business office. We have one of our business office staff members here, Jen, in the back. Our business office works tirelessly through the summer to make sure our teachers have what they need to start school in September. We're here to support them, make sure they get paid, and close out the year before and get ready for our audit, too. So I just want to share how excited I am to begin working with our new superintendent and with the incoming board members and say thank you to Dr. Goodman and to the previous board members who left. It was a pleasure working with them. And it's an honor to be part of such a dedicated community that values collaboration, excellence, and continued improvement. And I look forward to all the important work we'll accomplish together. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now we are ready for the first recognition of the audience on agenda items. Michelle, just remember to state your name and address.
Good evening. Michelle Frat, 216 Midland Avenue, Tuckahoe. I want to say welcome to Mr. Roberts and welcome to Ms. Deutsch. And congratulations to Allison and Scott for your new positions this school year and to Lou and Joel and Pete for all of the work you've done. I just wanted to thank everybody for this brand-new, fresh start. It's going to be an amazing school year. We know that. And just to let you know that specifically to you, Mr. Roberts, that this is an amazing community with a lot of support from not only your Board and your staff, but also the PTA with our president, Sue Wernos. And I just happen to be on the PTA myself. But we just wanted to welcome you and wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michelle. Anybody else? Okay. And now we are going to vote on our consent agenda, which is quite large because it's the reorg meeting. And so it's just a lot of routine stuff that goes on each year that we have to approve. Thank you to Robin, who put most of this together. It is a lot of work, as I know. And I really appreciate all the work that goes into it. Thank you. Okay. So a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Items.
Pete? Items number, items number two through 49. Okay. So Pete, second. Scott? Any discussion? No? Okay. I have one thing. Item number 34, the tuition rate. I did bring this up last year, and I'm going to bring it up again. I am happy that we have increased our tuition rate by $1,000. However, we are still slightly lower than what New York State SED allows us to charge. And my own personal feeling is that we should be charging what New York SED does, the limit that New York SED does allow us to charge. It's like 18 and change. So we're not much off. But I do feel that it is a privilege for children to attend school here, especially out-of-district children. And I know that, you know, while we want to keep it competitive, I do feel that it would be, I would like to see us getting closer to the New York State SED rate for out-of-district students.
Does this count for special ed students?
No, no, no. Especially, special ed is a completely different rate. And actually, faith calculates that in a really very, very financially conservative way.
How frequently, how frequently does the New York State limit move?
So every year. It's based on your, face, do you want to talk a little bit about it again?
Sure. It changes every year, and it's based on our expenditures. It's a formula that's out. It's like a two-page formula. So it does vary every year.
And it can go up or down.
Yeah.
So this is, this year it's actually a little lower than it was last year.
Understood.
So, but many schools do go to the limit. We don't. And that's just my own personal opinion.
Something to look at now or something to look at for next year?
It's something for next year.
Okay.
Yeah, we can bring it to the finance committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, I mentioned it last year. I want to mention it again.
So just out of curiosity, I'm sorry, Allison. Just out of curiosity, so the recommendation for the amount on here, does that come from the finance committee?
The recommendation came from Dr. Goodman.
Right. So that, yeah. So what goes into that decision?
So we didn't go to the finance committee. It's something we'll bring to them. But historically, the increase has been $500 every two years. And that has been a very slow increase. So this year, we looked at it and just bumped it up. Not so much that we would lose any tuition families. We have gained a few this year. So just to keep it still where its parents would want to stay, but still an increase.
Well, it's a good point, right? Because if you dramatically increased it, it would impact the folks that are already sending their kids here and paying. So it's something to consider.
I mean, we could consider doing like a grandfather sort of thing.
Right, right, right.
You know, you always, but anybody new comes in at the higher rate.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So we already made the motions. So all in favor? On to business of the Board. Adopt policy 2245, ex officio student board member. This policy is, was given to us by the governor. On September 5th, 2024, the governor signed Senate Bill S9018A, amending the New York State educational law to allow for the designation of students as ex officio members of school boards and clarifying what student members are permitted to do. This law requires school districts and votes to designate at least one ex officio student member and their school board. This bill repeals the sections of the educational law that currently call for school district to submit a referendum to voters to determine whether a school district should have an ex officio student member. The law will take effect July 1, 2025. So we have already read this policy, right? This is the, so now we're voting. Okay. So a motion to resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District adopt policy 2245, ex officio student board members. Scott?
Second.
Lou? All in favor? And we will be coming out with more on who that person is going to be and how we come up with that. Okay. Second reading of policy number 6380, travel event reimbursement. Okay. So this is, the district is revising its travel and expense reimbursement policy to align with the current standards and ensure compliance. Meal reimbursements will follow the U.S. General Service Administration, also known as GSA, per diem rates based on the travel location, sales tax on meals consumed during authorized business travel and reimbursement, sorry, and reimbursable in accordance with New York State OSC Opinion 80-63. Gratuites are reimbursable up to 18%. Meals that are already included in the conference registration fee will not be reimbursed, and no reimbursement will be provided for snacks or other items purchased outside of the designated meal allowance. These changes will be reviewed and were reviewed and discussed with the Audit and Finance Committee. So that was the second reading from that. So we don't need to do anything. That's right? Yep. Second reading of policy 8113, extreme heat conditions days. New York State law now requires all public schools to have an excessive heat policy to protect students and staff from unsafe indoor temperatures. Schools must monitor classroom temperatures and take action when they reach 82 degrees Fahrenheit, including relocating students if the temperature reaches 88 degrees Fahrenheit. This law ensures that schools are prepared to respond to extreme heat and maintain a self-learning, learning environment, safe learning environment, sorry. Number four, approve a capital project accounting proposal. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves a proposal with fiscal advisers and marketing, marketing, Inc. For capital projects, accounting and state, sorry. For capital projects, accounting and state aid services for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, at a rate of 250 per hour, and authorize the president of the Board to execute said proposal. I have a motion. Pete, second. Lou? All in favor? Approve a contract extension. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approve a contract extension with H&amp;B Consultants LLC for the period of September 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, at a total cost of $5,062.16. Do I have a motion? Scott, second. Joel, all in favor? Approve a contract extension. Resolve that the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Unified School District approves a contract extension with Aramark Educational Services LLC of Philadelphia, PA, to manage the district's food services for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year with an increase based on the May twenty-twenty-five Consumer Price Index of Urban Consumers CPI dash U of three point four percent. Do I have a motion? Scott, second. Pete, all in favor? Approve a retainer for legal counsel agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District appoint Vervin and Ferlazzo, P.C., as the district's attorney for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year for an annual retainer fee of eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty pursuant to the attached retainer and legal counsel agreements for up to four hundred and fifty hours of work to include all legal services which may be required by the district, excluding legal services relating to litigation and/or hearing matters, and authorize the superintendent of schools to execute this said agreement. Do I have a motion? Joel, second. Pete, all in favor? Appoint a fiscal advisor. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District approve an agreement with Capital Market Advisors LLC for fiscal advisement for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year as follows, and authorize the board president to execute said agreement. For bond issues, seven thousand six hundred and fifty base fee plus fifty-two cents per one thousand par amount of bonds issued over three million dollars. For note issues, five thousand one hundred dollars. For continuing disclosures, two thousand five hundred dollars, including all required material, event notices, for additional services rendered by the CMA personnel, and, sorry, at the request of the district, such as state aid assistance, will be billed at an hourly rate of one hundred and eighty dollars. Do I have a motion? Pete, second.
I just have one question.
Sorry.
So Faith, sorry. This is to manage, sorry. Is this basically just to manage our bonds that we have out for construction? To them advise where to put these bonds? Just a little, yeah. So I'll let you tell them that.
So they, they handle the bond issuance. So when we go out to sell bonds, they put together the offering statement. They reach out to the bond buyers. They advertise the sale. They collect the bids for our bonds. And then they recommend, you know, the awarding of the bonds. And they actually were huge when we had, they played a big part in helping us navigate when we went out to bid, when we went out for bond sale on that terrible day. And they quickly had us pivot and issue short-term bonds, and we did really well. So, so they handle all of that. And the additional services would be, you know, if we were looking for another capital project, they can help figuring out like, well, what that amortization would look like, when, you know, netting state aid with it. So they do a lot of work with that. We're not there yet, but this is, we're going to be issuing a tan soon. So they, they'll handle the sale of the tan and working with bidders to get bids on the tans.
Okay, very helpful. Thank you. Thank you.
So we were up to second. Second. Scott, all in favor? Appoint a school physician agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District appoint Dr. Rosemary Callejaris as school physician for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year and authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute said agreement. Do I have a motion? Scott, second. Pete, all in favor? Approve a cooperative purchasing agreement. Whereas Sourcewell is a service cooperative governmental organization located in the state of Minnesota. And whereas Sourcewell offers cooperative procurement solutions to government entities located in the United States and Canada. And whereas the Tuckahoe Unified School District desires to use Sourcewell's cooperative purchasing contract to contracts, to contract with Staples Contract and Commercial LLC for the use of equipment, products, and/or services, and be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District hereby approves the use of contract zero seven zero nine two four dash SCC between Staples Contract and Commercial LLC and Sourcewell for the use of office supplies and workplace solutions for a term of, from July twenty twenty, July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a motion? Scott, second. Joel, all in favor? Approve an agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District approves an agreement with the Tuckahoe Police Department to provide security detail for the district events for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year at a rate of one hundred and sixteen dollars per hour. Do I have a motion? Scott, second. Joel, all in favor? Thank you, Tuckahoe Police Department. Approve an agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District approves an agreement with Eastchester Police Department to provide security detail for district events for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year at a rate of one hundred dollars per hour. Do I have a motion? Lou, Scott, second. All in favor?
Faith, make sure you call Eastchester first. They're cheaper.
Thank you, Eastchester Police Department. Okay, approve an agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District approves an agreement with Edgar Canita for photography services for the district athletic events for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year at an amount not to exceed three thousand five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Joel, second. Pete, all in favor? Joe, are you in favor?
Oh, yes, I'm in favor. I know you did very well.
Approve an agreement. Resolve that the Board, resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District approves an agreement with Ronnie Webb for photography services for the Tucker Home Middle School and Tuckahoe High School twenty-twenty-five homecoming pep rally at an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars.
Three hundred.
Three hundred dollars. Sorry, three hundred dollars.
Faith almost lost her share.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Three hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Scott, Lou, second. All in favor? Three hundred. Approve a proposal. Resolve that the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Unified School District approves a proposal from the custom cheer, cheerio to provide cheerleading game day choreography in preparation of the fall season on September seventh, twenty twenty-five, in the amount not to exceed three thousand five hundred dollars. Scott, motion first. Joel, second. All in favor? Approve a proposal. Resolve that the Board of Education approve a proposal with custom cheer, cheerio to provide winter competition choreography and skill days for varsity cheerleading to take place during practice on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-five and September fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at an amount not to exceed four thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Joel, second. Scott, all in favor? Number seventeen. Pete, how do I do this such a thing?
Yeah, so you want to motion to table seventeen and eighteen, yeah.
All right. So number seventeen, approve a proposal, and number eighteen, approve a proposal. Do I have a motion to table the agenda items for further discussion? Scott, second. Pete, all in favor? Approve an athletic merger. Resolve that the Tuckahoe, that the Tuckahoe Board of Education and the Tuckahoe Unified School District, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant principal of student services and athletics, approves the sport merger with Eastchester High School for varsity and JV boys lacrosse for the spring twenty-twenty-six season. Do I have a motion? Scott, second.
I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say thank you to Andy Colas, oh, I'm sorry. I just want to say thank you to Andy Colasano for really looking into this, and Eastchester as well, the combined athletic merger of the sport lacrosse for boys JV and varsity. The two athletic directors from Eastchester and Tuckahoe really came together to make this happen. Andy figured out that our numbers were going to be low for varsity going forward, and kind of JV was in the mix, but keeping modified where it is in Tuckahoe because our numbers are strong. And Eastchester had a similar problem because of graduating kids. And we lost some students in eighth grade this year for high school next year, so that offset twenty-something kids not going forward to the high school next year. So therefore, JV numbers were really low. And this is also, it's a kind of semi burden off the district for fiscal, for financially, right? Because now we can kind of put funds in some other places that we're merging with Eastchester and to go forward and keep growing the program. Hopefully, maybe one day we bring it back. But hats off to the Eastchester Athletic Director and Mr. Colasano for making this happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, all in favor?
Second.
Oh, second, sorry. Second Scott? All in favor?
Scott first was first.
Oh, Scott was first. All right, Louis is second.
Sorry, apologize.
Louis, second. All in favor?
Summer meeting.
Okay. Approve an athletic merger. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuck, of the Tuckahoe Unified School District, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant principal of student services and athletics, approves a sports merger with Eastchester Unified School District and Pelham Unified School District for varsity, junior varsity, and modified wrestling for the twenty-twenty-five winter season. Do I have a motion? Scott, second. Joel, all in favor?
Joel?
I'm sorry.
Thank you again.
I get to swing at it.
Thank you again, Mr. C, for coming up with a creative way to continue our program.
Yes. I thank you to Pelham. You're, you're the shit.
Approve provision two eligibility. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District hereby acknowledges the district's receipt of provision two eligibility from the New York State Education Department permitting free breakfast and free lunch for all resident students for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Do I have a motion?
I have one question.
Pete?
Just one question.
Okay, wait, you know what? So let's do, so let's do first, second, and then we'll do discussion. Just makes sense.
Has that ever done?
Yes, yes.
I did it two last time. I forgot.
All right, so Lou, second, or, okay, raise your hand.
Then just.
Okay, discussion.
What is, is there any impact on the food that is served? Is it the same quality food or is it different?
Faith? Faith.
There you go, Faith.
It's absolutely the same. There is no change. It's the same meals we've always provided. We've always been part of the National School Lunch Program. It's just now the state is subsidizing it. So everything will remain the same. What is free is a complete meal. We did send home some information in our happenings towards the end of last year about what makes a complete meal. So not everything is free. Snacks are not free. It's what is considered a complete meal under the National School Lunch Program. So we'll send some more information out as we get closer to the school year so families know. And there's a lot of ways to make a complete meal. And our cafeteria staff are very knowledgeable on that. So everything is the same as it currently is.
Perfect.
Also, I just want to mention that we do still encourage all families to fill out the free and produced lunch form. It really will make a big difference in the amount of reimbursement that we will get. The state is very reliant on those forms being completed. So please, even though it's free for everybody, continue to fill out those forms and send them, and it's really, really important. Second thing that I just want to point out is that a second lunch is not free. So if you go back for something else, then you do have to pay for it. But your first meal is, is free. Okay, so all in favor? Approve a piggybacking. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District, in accordance with the provisions of general municipal law, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District hereby authorizes the district to enter into a contract with the following vendors, subject to and through cooperative purchasing with the White Plains City School District contract and the unit pricing and terms set forth therein. On the basis that the award of the contract by White Plains City School District to the vendor was made to the lowest responsible bidder and promotes the public interest, taking into consideration the reliability of the bidder, the quality of the labor, materials, equipment, and/or supplies to be furnished, and the conformity with the bid documents, and because such award ensures that the prudent and economical use of public monies is in the best interest of the district taxpayer, facilitates and acquisition of goods and services of maximum quality at the lowest possible cost under the circumstances and guards against favoritism, impro, improvidence, extravagance, fraud, and corruption. The award is subject to the submission of all required documents by the vendors to the district and the execution of a contract to our purchase orders. A&amp;C Furia Electric Motors Pump Systems, Fred A. Cook Drain Cleaning Thermodynamics Corp. and Clean Air Quality Service, HVAC Filters and Installation, Thompson Lock and Supply Company Locksmith, Pat Paving, Inc., Asphalt Repairs, Automated Elevator Service, Elevator Service, and WBE Fencing for Fence. Do I have a motion? Scott, Pete, second. Scott, all in favor? Approve a payment. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District approve a payment to the Silver Star Transportation for this trip to Six Flags Great Adventure on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in the amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. Do I have a motion? Scott, second. Joel, all in favor? Personnel recommendations. I am going to abstain from this vote because I have a personal benefit in it. However, I am in favor of everything in it, but I am not officially voting because I do have a personal interest. Personnel recommendations. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District approves personnel recommendations, action items through and. Do I have a motion? Pete, second. Scott, all in favor?
Got us?
Got it. I, I am abstaining. Yeah, did I say that?
Yeah.
Second recognition of the audience. This is for anything you would like to speak about.
Hi.
Hi, Alex. Just remember, state your name.
Yeah.
And address, and it's a three-minute limit.
Okay, it'll be really quick. So I'm Alexandra Campana. I live at A. Pasadena Road, Bronxville. I just wanted to speak a little bit about a meeting that we'll be having because I'm here representing a group of parents that want to start a SEPTA, which is a special needs PTA. I know Sue spoke about that last meeting. We're having our second meeting Thursday, July seventeenth, at seven o'clock on Zoom. And I just wanted to put it out there. So hopefully, if there's people that didn't join our first meeting and aren't on our mailing list, they're still welcome to join. They can email. We have an email that we've been using, tuckahoeschoolssepta@gmail. And that's it. I hope more people are able to join.
Congratulations.
It's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Michelle Frat, 216 Midland Avenue in Tuckahoe. Just a few quick comments, really, just to number sixteen. I happen to be the president of the Tuckahoe Varsity Cheerleader Fund Rating Committee. And I want to thank you for approving what you have approved this evening for the choreography. The first one did speak just to the varsity cheerleading, and I don't know if there is a discussion about where the JV cheerleading is also going to have their choreography approved. I don't know if that's coming up at a separate meeting, but I did notice that it was just varsity on this particular resolution. And then I also noted that you did table the next two resolutions that were for the camp. And I just wanted to speak to what the camp is and just for the community. When I first came into supporting my daughter and her team with cheer, and I saw camp, I thought they were going off into the woods somewhere and going into cabins and sleepaway camp. But it is just something that is on site here in Tuckahoe at one of our schools. And it will help support what is becoming a much more rigorous season with game day cheer starting up this year as being mandatory. And it will help support our teams going into the competition season in the fall and in the winter. So I, I just hope that the board will really consider supporting those, those camp days for our JV and our varsity teams. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Motion to adjourn the meeting. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Unified School District motion to adjourn the meeting. Scott, second. Joel, all in favor? All right, have a good night, everyone. Thank you for coming. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you.